Are making the decisions to make our city even better. And we know we have a lot of employees, Lord, but we ask a special blessings tonight on our police and fire departments. They put on that uniform and they go out and they're an open target sometimes for people, so we would ask that you would protect them. We ask all these things in your son's holy name, Jesus Christ, our living God. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Curly.
Here.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Here.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Here.
Councilmember Shadlick.
Here.
All right, moving on to approval of the agenda, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Support. Please call the roll.
Support you, Mayor, or Ms.
Councilmember.
About raising the wall because there's garbage. The city told me how to keep your garbage clean, so they put a dumpster in. Now I got asleep, asleep, well, sleeping where the dumpsters used to be. Every morning I water my garden, I go back there, I pick up garbage, there's rodents coming from there, that Dollar General, I don't know what to do anymore, I'm five, five a guy stood. I'm contacting Roseville and Marle too, because it's just, you guys have to work together because they said the wall was built in 1970 and it's supposed to be seven foot, I don't, I don't know, you guys have to figure that out. But when I stand at it, I'm five eight, it's right here. So when people walk by that alley, which is 24/7, they're driving along, they see my good vogs and they're just looking for an opportunity. Ex-Marine, I don't want to be in the paper, but I gotta keep my eyes open. Please help me with my wall. If you guys can't do something, I'll raise it myself if I have to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for keeping the area clean, you guys did. Roseanne's been working with me and she spoke up and they keep it clean, but it's still garbage every morning in my yard, riffraff, looking at my house.
Thank you very much. Could you actually leave your information with, contact information with somebody over in this corner? Maybe you can. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Mary Hall, East Point. I was not here at the last meeting and I heard some pretty interesting things while I was watching it. I wanted to comment on one in particular, and that was regarding the, I'm assuming it was the request for a resolution for St. Veronica's 100th year anniversary next year. The way it was phrased and worded, I got a little irritated by it. Because I believe that, for the most part, you have the integrity to honor anyone celebrating such a milestone, and I'm sure that will not change for next year. So I appreciate the interest that you put into what you do and the non-partisanship approach that you take in what you do for such celebrations. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is John, I live over on East, I live in East Point, over on Rain Street, I'm sorry, Rain Avenue. You guys doing a really good job of fixing all the construction that needs to be there. But there is one small problem, actually, it's like, it's a big problem. Five houses north of Nine Mile on Rain Avenue, what the construction workers didn't finish doing, it's like they forgot about it, there's a very large hole in the ground. Five houses north of Nine Mile. Could you guys come over and take a look at it, fix the hole in the ground? I'm afraid there's gonna be a little kid that's gonna fall into this hole. See for yourself. Thank you for your time, have a nice day.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Good evening, Mike Lamow, City of East Point. I'm here. Number one, I understand, talking with Drew Buckner from the Highway Department, they have not heard anything in regards to Phase Three. Somewhere in there, I understand there might be another consulting firm in there involved, but somebody is mixing up the beans and apples. And I would hope that, knowing what the, um, auto count was, 21,000, and it's questionable, I understand, but anything under 16,000, you can look at the road diet, you must have a city meeting held by the Board of Directors according to the planning commission's thing. And it is not to be held here, it is to be held in a place where the entire group of citizens can meet, and it should be broadcast and things mailed out to the citizens. Last time, on this Nine Mile we're doing right now, we had it here and that was a colossal joke. Not picking on anybody, but it was a colossal joke. Over 16,000 to 21,000, you have to have a voter's approval. I don't think you'll get that. Over 16,000, also, according to the federal plan for roads and road construction, diet programs are not looked at, nor are roundabouts. And I'd sure as hell like to know where we were gonna put a roundabout at Nine and Kelly. I have friends that own all of the property there, one man, God rest his soul. I would hope that we take a long look at that and we quit the thinking about road diet still on our mind, and let's get the road done, let's get it contracted out, and let's get it done. Please, for the citizens of East Point, for the citizens of East Point, and for the general public. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else?
Hi, Jennifer Nicolusi, East Point resident. Yeah, I'm also wondering about Nine Mile. I know at the last meeting, I had asked if there had been any updates, didn't really get a response on that, we just kinda went back over that you had asked for a three-lane design back in June of 2024, and 14 months later, we still don't have that design that's been brought before council. There was a traffic study done in December that there were a lot of questions about, numbers didn't make sense. They were stating that regardless of whether or not we do a road diet, 20 years from now there would be double the amount of fatalities and injury accidents, which I don't even see how that makes sense. You know, I, looking at the website, the city's website, my understanding was that tentatively the engineers need to finalize the design by July of 2025 in order to complete the specifications and put the project out for bid, ensuring it meets the completion deadline. The project funds need to be used by December 2026. Is that still the same timeline? Has something shifted? Again, we've not really had much information on it. You know, I have concerns about traffic being rerouted to the half-mile roads. I see all kinds of traffic on Stevens, I'm one of them. I haven't driven on Nine Mile in a month and a half with construction and I am a, I'm pretty sure that, were you to reduce just part of Nine Mile to three lanes, I probably won't be driving on Nine Mile afterwards either, like everybody else. You know, you can cut down side streets to get where you want to go. In fact, I just saw a post online today about the community garden, encouraging people to come to the community garden and to use Melrose to get there and park in the church. I understand that's because of construction, but it is, that's what people do. If it's too difficult to get down a road, they're going to be cutting down side streets, they're going to be using roads that are residential, which is Stevens and Topher. We have parks on there. You've said before and in other discussions that you're trying to get less vehicles on Nine Mile. Those vehicles are gonna have to go somewhere. It's not like people are gonna just give up driving to work or driving to school or driving downtown or, you know, anywhere like that.
You have 30 seconds.
Where are those cars gonna go? You know, 10 Mile, the, the traffic count that was done last year or the year before, that's right at 20,000, just under 20,000 vehicles per day. So, again, I'd like some clarification on where we are as far as the Nine Mile road diet. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else?
There's a bumper sticker, "Last time we mixed politics and religion, people were burned at the stake." Yet religion keeps rearing its head at council meetings in the halls of Congress and so on. So much for the separation of church and state. Last meeting I was at, I addressed kindness towards animals and referenced that throughout the Bible, that people are to be good stewards to the animals. Obviously, somebody doesn't know how to interpret the Bible and got all bent out of shape about my remarks and confronted me after the meeting. That is not acceptable, that will not happen again. I will not tolerate anyone confronting me because they don't like my comments. I've also noticed that at these meetings, there are those who, you know, it's one thing that under the First Amendment, yes, we do have the right to redress our government without, of our grievances, without fear of reprisal, but lately, the attacks, the personal attacks against LGBTQ community, why? It's ridiculous, you know? It's, it's steeped in fear and hatred. You're not going to become gay if you stand next to somebody who's gay, just like, you're not gonna turn black if you stand next to somebody who's black. This is just getting really ridiculous. This is a council meeting, it's not Bible study, okay? We're supposed to work together as a community and come up with solutions, and each one of us should bring to the table, what can we do to make life better in this community? It's not about vetting your spleen, your misogyny, your homophobia, you know, cruelty, just across the board. This is ridiculous. This is not acceptable in this community, and thankfully, the majority here are of like mind. Now, I've been talking about the animals basically all year, because that's my thing, it's about education and advocacy for the animals. What can we do to make their lives better? That we need to protect them. There's such simple things we can do. Don't buy products that are tested on animals.
You have 30 seconds.
Adopt, you know? Go to a rescue shelter, adopt them for life. Don't wear any parts of their body, don't eat them, you know? It's just, it's so simple. I mean, come on, you know? And, and you don't have to follow the, follow the Bible, it's just good common sense that any of us who have good morals and values, we recognize that we don't want to see any cruelty or suffering inflicted upon animals. If you see it and report it, can I just give the phone numbers real quick?
You can come up after and give them.
Okay. Well, then you give the phone numbers to report animal cruelty, then.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to be heard? All right, seeing none, the first hearing of the public is closed. Oh, I'm sorry, not closed yet, we had one comment that has to be written. Go ahead, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, City Administration is in receipt of an email that was received from a gentleman by the name of Charles Blackwell, and it reads, quote, "Hello, pursuant to the American with Disability Act, I want the following public comment read on my behalf of the August 15th East Point City Council Meeting. Good evening. Councilman Cardy DeMonico should make a motion for a resolution calling for the release of the Epstein files," unquote.
All right, thank you very much. The hearing of the public is closed, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes, regular meeting minutes from July 15, 2025?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of July 15, 2025.
Second.
All right. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick.
Yes.
All right, thank you. There's no scheduled hearings or unfinished business, so we'll move on to reports from administration. We'll start with City Mayor Pocky Doom.
Thank you, Mayor. Mine is pretty short today. For those of you who don't go down Nine Mile because it's so difficult to get around, the Office Depot building is in the process of being torn down right now. Sheets is really moving very quickly to get that site ready, to put up their new, well, gas station and a little bit of party store, lunch place, it's a combination of anything. If you've been to Sheets, you'll know what I mean. And I have, because I worked in the South and Sheets is everywhere in the, in the southern part of the country. So that's the big thing, Nine Mile's coming along very quickly. Today, they started laying some of the, the wires, I guess if you will, the steel and whatnot, for that centerpiece to be poured. So I know they're working as quickly as they can, but they certainly have some of the side roads closed off, and that makes it difficult for people to get around. So bear with us, bear with them, they're trying to get it done as quickly as possible. And that, that section right there is part of the grant that we have and the funds that we have available. We're not at the point yet to start the next phase, so, you know, asking us to hurry isn't going to change anything at this point, because that is not projected to start until the next year. None of us have heard anything. We call constantly, we have our representative from our engineering firm here, and he makes regular calls to find out what it is the state is going to approve. They have both designs, they have the five-lane, which was requested by a prior council, they have the three-lane, also requested by this current council, and all we're asking is, please tell us which, which design you'll approve. And so we've got the delays, and I'll just, Ryan, is there anything new that we need to know or that you can share with us? I put them out here, it's my report, and I put, I put Ryan on the stand.
Sure, thank you, LP. That is true, we did submit the designs, both designs, the five-lane and three-lane design for the great inspection meeting last month. We're in the process of scheduling that meeting, it sounds like that meeting's gonna take place the last week of August. At that point, we do expect to hopefully get an answer as to which way we're going to go. And then once we have the great inspection meeting, I'll be here in front of council to present the design that we have so that we can finalize that and get that out to bid here over the winter for construction next year.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you doing my report for me.
If anybody else has any questions on that, I can answer that or any other projects too that are going.
Okay. Thank you. And, and that's my report.
Councilman Curly, did you have?
Do you have a question?
No. No, he's walking away.
Ryan.
In your, in your experience, this, this is off the cuff, so you may not know the answer, is a, is there a possibility that could, they could say, whatever, whatever the council wants to do, we don't care?
That's up to M.D. to answer that. I, I think they're gonna give us a straight answer, whether it's a three-lane or a five-lane. We've gone through the environmental process, they've reviewed that, based upon that environmental review process and the draft design that we've, well, the draft design we put together, M.D. did encourage us to submit the three-lane design as part of the G.I. meeting. So it's still, it's definitely, the road diet versus the five-lane, both are still on the table.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, was that everything?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to our Finance Director's report, Mr. Blom.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Yesterday, there was an email sent out, a response to a couple of questions from Councilman DeMonico. Hopefully, they'd answered everything that was being asked, and hopefully you all saw it. And then earlier today, I sent out the quarterly investment report, which is actually a fourth quarter slash full-year report. We had good earnings, I guess thanks to higher interest, not good for the consumer, but good for our investments. So you can take a look at that, and if you have any questions, let me know. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Blom? Thank you very much. We'll move on to our City Attorney's report, Mr. Albright.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just a couple of things this evening. Last week, I did receive confirmation from the Governor's Office that the proposed ballot language for the charter amendment has been approved, and so that ballot language is clear to be placed on the November ballot. I also received an email today regarding a new opioid settlement matter involving Purdue. This is in addition to the one that I talked about a couple of council meetings ago. So in the next couple of weeks, I'll be getting the information together and filling it out and sending it back to them, and then there'll be additional settlement proceeds that the council will, or the city will be receiving. And that's all I have, Mayor. Council's also in receipt of our monthly status report, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Albright? Thank you very much. We'll move into new business, Item A, approval and adoption of Resolution 25-2006, committed fund balance, would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll motion we approve and adopt Resolution 25-2006, identifying categories to be included in the general funds committed fund balances.
Second.
All right, any questions on this? Please call the roll.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to Item B, which is labeled as discussion on the replacement of the water main on Lexington prior to reconstruction. I know we have our DPW director here on this one. Would you like to say, I guess, a couple of words on what DPW is seeking regarding that?
Mayor, why, why he's coming up to speak, a question. It says discussion, shouldn't that be discussion and action and action? I mean, if we're just, this isn't something that we got to.
That was my understanding, that's why I asked Mr. Palucci to come up and clarify what, what the item was.
Exactly. I'd like it to be a motion rather than a discussion, so I do have a motion, if somebody would like to read it. CDBG is reconstructing part of that road. We've had many water main breaks on that road, so we'd like to get a water main in there before they start reconstruction. Further, we'd like to put it out to bid on the Nine Mile Water Main as well, so we get better pricing on two projects rather than just one.
And I understand that, and so I think the motion you were requiring, I don't know what the exact wording was, but something like authorize AW to prepare plans and specs. All right, well, did anyone on council want to open this up, I guess, with any discussion or questions?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, so is this, this will be an additional project, or can it be part of, you know, we've got the DWS RF?
It's gonna be an additional project.
Okay, can't be part of that, so we'll have to throw another million into the, yeah. Okay, and then, when, how old's the current water main there, do you know about? Pretty old, then?
1954.
Okay.
Yeah.
Probably not the oldest, but it's up there.
In the last three months, we've had five water main breaks over there, so.
Okay.
We don't want to put a new road over an old water main.
Okay. Yeah, that was all I had.
Any other questions? All right, would anyone like to make a motion on this item?
Yeah, and I'll read off his recommended motion, and if I leave something out, let me know. I move that we approve AW Engineering's proposal to prepare plans for, plan specifications and provide inspection for a water main replacement on Lexington Avenue from Nine Mile Road to Stevens Drive.
Support that.
Okay. Any other questions?
No, thanks for the answers. And I think we were moving it from the street to the sidewalk too, right? So that's like, what we try to do now?
Correct.
Cause it's cheaper to get to then?
Yes, less expensive to replace sidewalk and eight-inch road.
All right, cool, thank you.
All right, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
All right, moving on to Item C, approval of purchase for 2024 F-250 pickup truck for the Department of Public Works and Services. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would move to approve the purchase of the 2024 Ford F-250 four-by-four pickup truck on the current MI deal, contract number MA240000000, from the low bidder, Gornow Ford of Woodhaven, Michigan, for the amount of $54,545.
I'll support that.
All right, motion support, are there any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Shadlick.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
All right, Item D, approval of purchase for two post-hoist for the Department of Public Works and Services garage, would anyone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the purchase of an 18,000-capacity two-post, three-stage arms Mohawk, two-post lift, through the current MI deal, contract number 230000001507, in the amount of $24,909.
Support.
All right, moved by Councilman Curly, supported by Councilwoman Shadlick. Any questions? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Curly.
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick.
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico.
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld.
Yes.
Councilmember Baker.
Yes.
Great, moving on to Item E, introduction of first reading of ordinance number 25-1250, updates to fee schedule.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, there's one correction for DPW and the Showmobile. In the, there's two categories, one is the daily rate of 200, although it's my understanding there are times when it, their day. are times when it the day of the event is Saturday, but it's delivered on Friday and picked up on a on a workday. So the charge would only be the $200. But for the delivery, setup and removal, D.P.W. would like that to be $200 plus the hourly cost for delivery, setup and removal for the administrator to add that. If we could just add that to the fee schedule, please.
All right. And would anyone on council like to open up discussion, I guess, discussion or a motion on this? If not, I can say what I was kind of thinking about it. I know that I, for those of you who don't know, I was out of town and I recently returned and then had surgery. So I wanted a little bit more time to go through some of the changes within the departments and probably ask department heads individually. I think it would be a long, very long meeting to go through all the changes everywhere. So I would be asking council probably to table this till the next meeting, so I could get some answers from administration on some of my questions.
Should we probably, is that a motion and you want to add in the the next item since it's tied to it, the next agenda item?
I'll make a motion. I'll wait and see if anyone is opposed to that. If everyone's okay with that, I'll make a motion.
I have no problem.
All right. I'll make a motion. I guess, yeah, I'll tie them together to table items E and F to the next regularly scheduled meeting.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
All right. Item, we'll skip forward to item G then, approval of special event application, Jesus Anointed Ministry Vacation Bible School. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the special event application for Jesus Anointed Ministry Vacation Bible School event on August 24, 2025, contingent upon the following being completed by August 18, 2025. All food trucks must be permitted with an approved inspection. Any tents larger than 10 feet by 10 feet must be properly permitted. All tents must comply with the International Fire Code 2021, Chapter 31. If food will be prepared on site, the host has to comply with the Macomb County Health Department for a temporary food license and a traffic barrier. Parenthetical says no parking. Perimeter must be provided as indicated on the site plan.
Support.
All right. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Councilmember, sorry, yes, Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
All right. Payroll and bills. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move that we pay the bills in the amount of $3,417,219 and 11 cents.
Second that.
All right. Any questions on that? Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilmember Shadlick?
Yes.
All right. We are moving right into the second hearing of the public, which is now open. Would anyone wish to be heard?
Is it on the books to do 10 mile in the next couple of years, you know?
We don't answer questions during this portion. It's just your opportunities.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was, because you were complaining about nine mile. Go down 10 mile.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
Mary Hall Reifert again. Please forgive me for being a little silly tonight. I haven't been outside because of the air. The fresh air is making me feel a little something, something or other. Anyway, Councilman DeMonico, I truly wish people would read the agenda online and understand the role of the city council that has nothing to do with what the government is doing in Washington. So if you can get a hold of those Epstein files, though, by all means, let us. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
I'll go break it down there.
You know, Harvey, you and I go back a long way. We
I know.
Both have not changed, except you still have Curly here.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, I'd like to thank Mr. Kern of AEW for his dissertation on the Nine Mile Road project. He's very happy to hear that. And I hope it goes through that we hear in August. Well, it would be the September meeting. If you hear it in late August, it'll be the September meeting. And we get that job done. Four park lanes. Ho ki do.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Larry, it was East Point residence. I just want to bring to the attention of how some people just comes to the meeting to really, and they're good at to manipulate things and what have you. It's a problem when you initiate something, but then when you correct it about something and what have you, it becomes a problem. And you only, when one, you only want to use something when it benefits them and their narrative and what have you, and bringing up subjects and dealing with issues that they have no expertise in, no knowledge of, what have you. And then when a cry wolf, when somebody corrects it or bring it, or bring it to the forefront and everything. And so I believe we need to be careful of people like this that come with that type of narrative to misguide, to mislead and misinstruct people just for a narrative of whatever sort it is when it has no merit and no truth to it.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard?
Jennifer Nicollessi, East Point resident. Ms. Doom, thank you for clarifying what you know so far on Nine Mile. I'm not rushing anybody. I just, it's been a long time and it concerns me because I feel that sometimes things go on behind the scenes that by the time we hear about it, it's too late to undo it. And Mr. Kern, again, thank you for the update also. Kind of connected to that, I understand that there is a $40,000 grant that was awarded by SEMCOG to look into the Stevens Road corridor, which would cover, connect Warren, East Point, St. Clair Shores and Centerline to make that into bike lanes and pedestrian focused, trying to connect the Iron Bell Trail to Lake St. Clair. This makes sense. You know, Stevens is a road that isn't highly trafficked with vehicles or at least hasn't been. I wonder if SEMCOG is aware that we are contemplating doing a road diet on Nine Mile, which is inevitably going to put more vehicular traffic on Stevens. I see it. I've seen it this summer with the construction. I have no doubt that if we were to do a road diet in the middle of Nine Mile, that people would use alternate routes, namely Stevens. That's what I use. I mean, I used to take Nine Mile Road to get here. Now I take Stevens to get here. And it's not that I won't go to places on Nine Mile. I just choose not to drive on Nine Mile to get to them. I have lived here a long time. I know what side streets to go down to get to wherever I want to go. I'm sure there's a lot of people in the community that also do the same thing. You know, if that's what we want or are not concerned about having extra vehicular traffic on our side streets, on our residential streets, then, you know, go for it. But I thought, you know, the whole point of all of this was to make things safer everywhere. And I would think the priority would be the residential streets. I would think that the priority would be roads like Topher and Stevens, where we have parks and schools and churches and a splash pad that's supposed to become an into Kennedy Park.
You have 30 seconds.
That intersection at Stevens and Schroeder, I've never seen it. So where you have to wait four, five, six cars to get through the four-way stop there. It's not been like that before. But I think that if you do insist on pursuing the road diet, that's just going to be one of the repercussions. So I think think wisely on it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to be heard?
And continuation. So there are those who hide behind the Bible to justify misogyny, hatred, animal cruelty, child abuse and homophobia. These are not real Christians. These are these are just flat out hypocrites. It's pretty pathetic. And, you know, these are not the so-called supreme being that they know anything and everything throughout the Bible. You just don't use the Bible to sit there and justify all your hate. And I've seen a lot of hatred that's being spewed towards this body. Again, you know, I made my previous comments. You know, Councilwoman DeMonico, you've been attacked relentlessly, something about receiving checks and getting paid for attending protests and whatnot. I'd really like to see the proof, you know? I want to see the pictures. I want to see the checks. I want to see the recordings. I want to see that concrete proof. Because there is no concrete proof. It's just a bunch of hatred and vitriol. Like I said earlier, it's one thing, you know, to exercise our First Amendment right and to say, you know, to redress our grievances and not fear reprisal, but you don't attack the person. You don't attack their gender, their race, their sexual orientation. You don't make up all this nonsense. But, you know, this is the stupidity going on at the federal level. And I think the majority of us have done everything we can to not drag that BS into our council meetings because we're trying to stay focused on how do we make this community a better place? When you come to these meetings, what are you doing to make this community a better place? What are you teaching? What are you sharing? You know, my thing, like I said, it's about the animals. And if there's any animal cruelty going on, any abuse, call an emergency dispatch. Call animal control. Don't sit by and just go, gosh, I feel sorry for the animals. That doesn't help the animals.
You have 30 seconds.
Other things we can do, just small, simple things we can do to not support animal cruelty. Don't support any of the events that use animals for entertainment. Sir Paul McCartney said it best, if slaughterhouses had glass walls, we'd all be vegetarian. There is so much that we can do for the animals, just small, simple acts of kindness. It costs nothing to be kind to
Thank you.
an animal. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Anyone else? All right. Seeing the second hearing of the public is closed, we'll move on to mayor and council reports. We'll start with Councilman Baker.
Thank you. Very efficient meeting. Everybody have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Curly.
Thank you. I'm sure Councilman DeMonico will mention this tonight, but on Thursday at Kennedy Park, there'll be music. But the big thing is there are going to be a dunk tank, a dunk dunk. I I served my decades in a dunk tank. At my age, at my age, I can't even climb up into the dunk tank. But Councilman DeMonico will be there. Can you give us a, I know it says five to whatever. You think he'll be there right at five or?
Maybe give us till 5:30 or something.
Okay, 5:30, he'll be in the dunk tank. And I think you get three softballs for $10. Might sound a little bit expensive, but all that money goes to the fund for the Memorial Day Parade. And they need the money. They cost a lot of money to do that. So I would urge you to go there. And maybe the people, and I don't think there's anybody here that's going to take the money. But if I paid $10 and threw 10 softballs and didn't hit it, I might take a two or $3 out of my pocket and I would say, hey, come on, $3, three more dollars, give me another ball. As long as we can get them wet. That's the main thing. Last week, I went to my hometown in Illinois, a really small town called Monunk, for my oldest brother's funeral. He was 95. It was a celebration. It was great. And so we we drove there and then drove back the next day. Long drive. But at the funeral home, they had a plaque that said, Love Memories and Treasures. And we all loved somebody now or at one time or another. And that love, when they pass away, would go into memories, right? We have a lot of memories, don't we? And from memories, it goes into treasures. I treasure this and that and this person. For me, my treasures, and I have a lot of them, but I'll just name a few. My mother would be on the top of the list, of course. And my, our daughter Victoria would be on that list. And my four brothers, four, have passed away. I'm the next oldest, so I don't know what that means, but we've lost four. And then the person who my heart still aches, and I loved her so much, that was Corinne Harper. Some of you remember her. Most of you do. And I would ask, you don't have to talk, but just raise your hand if you are like me and I have treasures in my heart. Yeah, yeah, almost everybody. Over here, too. Yeah. So that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Oh, thank you. Councilwoman Shadlick?
I would just, once again, even with the construction on Nine Mile Road, I would encourage everyone to continue to, to continue to go to those businesses there. They do need the business. So even though there is construction, it's still moving. I drive Nine Mile daily. I deliberately go out of my way to drive Nine Mile and it's moving. The cars are going. You can get through there. It's not a difficult thing to do. And like I said, I would strongly encourage you to, you know, go to those businesses and help help them out because they do need the business. Secondly, I'd like to encourage everyone to go to the Rockin Summer Nights tomorrow at Kennedy, I mean, Thursday at Kennedy. Sorry.
Not doing it twice.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman DeMonico?
Thank you. Councilman Curly, sorry about your brother. Glad you were able to celebrate his life. Yes, I guess then we'll start with the dunk tank. Yep. And yes, yeah, $10. You can throw three balls. I think there's probably a couple of people in the audience interested in that at least. So come on out. Let's see. Yeah. So the event's five to nine. Come out just for RARE's event, Rockin Summer Nights. There's all kinds of stuff going on. So come out for that. Throw a couple of softballs so that, you know, we we raise this money so that no taxpayer dollars are used for the Memorial Day Parade. So just each year, we've, we did this last year and we're doing it again this year. And then we just search for sponsors throughout the year to to sponsor the parade. You probably see the, at the end, we'll, we'll, we'll highlight them all and post about them on Facebook and everything. And thanks to everybody in the audience that has sponsored before. But yeah, come on out. Actually, where, oh, Karen, you're back. Karen will be up there, too. So if you don't want to dunk me, all right, we we made a deal where the money will go for animal control if you dunk Karen. Because I ain't sitting up there for four hours anyway. So you can give me a break then. So we'll, we'll do that and we'll have a good time. We had a good time last year. I think that was, that was the first time I ever did a dunk tank. So come on out. Sir, 10 Mile is on the agenda. Won't be like next year, but we are talking with the county and we do have actual plans to go forward with that soon. It certainly needs, needs it in parts for sure, like you said. And then hopefully the And then, hey, hopefully the, if the, hopefully the federal government's listening, release the Epstein files. Seriously. So that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I, I need to, I need to add, add something. I made a deal with the people who will give me the softballs, that if you're 88 years old, you get to, you get to be 50% closer than anybody else, so watch out.
I didn't see that in the fine print.
Yeah, watch it, Cardi. I, I, I'll, I'll, I'll get you, I'll buy six or nine balls if I have to.
I told you, $100, you can just push it. Well, $100, we'll just let you push it.
That's right. If you pay $100, you can, you can dunk him 20 times.
All right, well, I, I would encourage everyone to be out there Thursday. I'll be, I'll be there for part of the event. I won't be in the tank this year. Like I said, I just had surgery. I asked my surgeon, he told me I'm not allowed to do the dunk tank. So now that I know that, I also will add that for $20, you can add a bag of ice to the water when you. Other than that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll support that.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember DeMonico?
Yes.
Councilmember Curly?
Yes.
Mayor Kleinfeld?
Yes.
Councilwoman Shadlick?
Yes.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned at 7:51.
Thanks, Albright.